Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on June 16, 2020 at 4:03 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, this meeting will be conducted by video conference or telephone call. At least a core of the board will be participating by video conference or telephone conference in accordance with the provisions of Section 551.125 or 551.127 of the Texas Government Code that have been suspended in order of the governor. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. The Board of Trustees on June 16, 2020, beginning at 4:04 PM, will convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. We will reconvene in open meeting at approximately 5 o'clock. At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for June 16, 2020 at 5:10 PM. We will start our meeting with the open ceremony. Please join Dr. Raich in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Raich. If everyone could please silence their cell phones or put themselves on mute if they are not talking so that we do not hear any disruptions. And now if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, we will consider administrative appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And I'd like to recommend that the Board ratify the appointment of the individual discussed in closed session for Principal of Spear Elementary.
Do I have a motion to approve the ratification of the administrative appointments as discussed in executive section?
I'll make the motion to approve the ratification.
Second?
A second.
Okay, motion by Ms... Have a motion by Ms. Fowler, a second by Ms. Walton. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion. Since this meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be a roll call vote. Please state your name and your vote, either yes, if you are in favor of the motion, or no, if you are not in favor of the motion. And this will be the method of voting will be effective for the remaining of this meeting. Ms. Walton?
I vote Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Dr. Raich?
Erin Raich, I vote yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Mr. Hogg, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Chappa?
Justin Chappa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And we'd like to introduce our new principal for Spear, that's Tashalun McDonald. And so Tashalun attended Xavier University for her Bachelor of Arts in Journalism, University of Southern Mississippi for Master of Science in Public Relations. Most recently, Tashalun is a principal at Morton Elementary. She has served as an assistant principal, a fourth grade language arts teacher in Crowley ISD, has also been a fourth and fifth grade language arts teacher at Fort Worth ISD. And so congratulations to Tashalun. And we will, in a future Board meeting, bring our appointees to be recognized again. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Now we come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the Board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register by sending an email to the Superintendent of School Secretary Lisa Benjamin, lbenjamin@aisd.net, no later than 3:00 PM the day of the Board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the Board regarding agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have Mr. Stephen Poole.
Welcome, Mr. Stephen Poole.
Hi, Ms. Mays, how are you?
Good, thank you. This is a routine part of the School Board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You will have five minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up to please end your presentation. Mr. Poole?
Thank you, Ms. Mays, and members of the Board and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for the time again tonight. I wanted to share some updated information from other districts on compensation because I know that's a big part of your discussion tonight. Fort Worth is still penciling in 2% for all employees. Compensation, because I know that's a big part of your discussion tonight. I really don't know what's going on here. I hear a lot of feedback. Eagle Mountain Sagonau is looking at a 1% to 2% raise. Grapevine adopted a 1% raise for all employees. Mansfield has penciled in a 2% for their budget. And Louisville has adopted a 2% raise for all employees with adjustments for teachers at 20-plus years and a $750 stipend for all other employees. So that's what the information I have so far. But one thing that's been really interesting through all of this COVID school shutdown is what's been posted on social media. And I'm going to read something that I saw a mother post in March. She wrote, "Been homeschooling a six-year-old and eight-year-old for one hour and 11 minutes. Teachers deserve to make a billion dollars a year or a week." So you can see, a lot of our parents are understanding exactly what teachers go through on a daily basis. And I mentioned this because I remember sitting in the audience with you all last March when Mr. Turco shared polling results for the bond and a possible TRE election. And I remember distinctly, the highest rated question that was asked, either on the TRE or bond, was the one that was asked, if the new revenue, to the maximum of $1.17 at the time in the TRE, if the new revenue would be used to fund teacher pay raises so the district can continue to recruit and retain its teachers, how likely would you be to support a TRE? And 78% responded favorably, and that was the highest rated question. 11% were opposed to that, who would be opposed to teacher pay raises. But then you can see, the remainder were undecided. So that's an overwhelming support. And one thing that really caught my eye two Board meetings ago was when Ms. Powell presented the comparison of Arlington to other districts. But she highlighted the districts that have gone to their voters and asked for voter approval for money to dedicate toward teacher salaries and employee salaries. And that tells everything that you need to know. You see all the districts above you that have gone to their voters so they have more money to be able to pay their teachers, and the voters have supported that. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and also just highlight the last polling data that y'all did around that question. But thank you for your time, Ms. Mays. And if there's anything that I ever can do to assist, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda are action items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And we have several action items related to bond sales and refunding. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Powell. And we have some guests also who will be sharing some information. So Ms. Powell?
Great, thank you, President Mays, Board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. We mentioned at our Board meeting last week that we have been working with our financial advisors at Hilltop Securities to explore opportunities to bring down some debt, potentially lower the tax rate that we levy to pay debt. And all that has been part of our planning around the tax rate in total for next year and is very much related to our work with the general fund that you'll hear about again. Interestingly enough, in March, we were planning to do a refunding. And then COVID-19 struck, the bottom fell out of the markets, financial markets, and it just very quickly made no sense to pursue a bond refunding at that time. We have sat and waited and watched, and just in the last couple of weeks even, things have changed dramatically. And so we've reached back to our financial advisors. They validated what we were seeing and hearing. And they have done some work on our behalf and others, I think, at this moment as well, who are seeing the same opportunity. And so we have asked them to come this evening and to give you an overview of an opportunity to refund the 2014A series of bonds that we have outstanding. And as we say, have said in the past, refunding a bond issue is very much like refinancing your house. And so that's at a lower interest rate. And so that's what we're here to talk about this evening. So we have with us several folks this evening from Hilltop Securities, our financial advisors. We have George Wilford, who's a regional managing director. Also with him is Eric Mahoff, who's a director with Hilltop Securities. And then Dan Culver, who is our bond attorney, a partner. We recall Parker's important is here. And so I believe Mr. Wilford's going to make a brief presentation. I have the presentation I'll share for you to follow along with, and then they will be happy to answer any questions you may have. So, Mr. Wilford, I turn it to you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mays, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the Board. It's good, not necessarily be in person, but at least to see faces again and so on. And as Cindy indicated, this is an opportunity, potential opportunity, to refund the Series 2014A bond issue. And so she has the PowerPoint that we put up. The first part of this material really briefly covers the concept of the Board authorizing issuance, delegating pricing authority to administrative personnel, certain designated administrators, and then establishing minimum parameters with respect to being able to price and complete the refunding. And as the prior page just said, it's not a new procedure to the district. The district has done standalone refunding issues with delegated authority and parameters with respect to 2009, 11, 13, and 14 issuances. And as you see on the screen right now, and as I said, the Board delegates final pricing authority to designated pricing officers. And then it shows the parameters, really the most important parameter, because the term will not be extended and so on. The most important parameter is the minimum savings threshold. And in this case, and you'll see in a moment, we're recommending that that be 8% present value savings. So that would have to at least be met in order for us to go to market and pricing officer to approve a sale. So we might go on. Ms. Powell? And as it indicates here, the primary reason is flexibility. As Cindy indicated, we were in a position to bring this to the Board back in March, and then COVID hit, the markets really just seized up. And so now we're having to come to you to get this authority. Whereas a couple of other districts are in the same position as far as timing and the prospective savings. They had actually approved a parameter order preceding everything coming to a halt. And now we're ready to, you know, for their designated officers to be in a position to approve. So they've already gotten the flexibility in place, and that's what the Board is considering this evening. And as it shows, this is an advance refunding because we're not at the call date for this issue. That is actually in 2023. Used to, advance refundings were more commonplace than in the 2017 Tax Reform Act. As it shows, prohibited doing those at tax exempt interest rates. So now, in order to do a refunding such that you would go ahead and complete it, close it, and have the new refunding issue outstanding more than 90 days prior to that February 23 call date, it would have to be done at taxable interest rates. And so that's a lot of the monitoring and analysis that we've been doing preceding COVID. But even since, taxable interest rates are very narrow spreads to tax exempt. And collectively, they've both fallen and remained at literal historic low levels. So talking about an advance refunding at taxable interest rates so that the district doesn't have to wait till 2023 to see if there are savings available from refinancing this issue. The next section really shows first on page six. This is the summary of the issue itself. You can see that the callable principal amount on the second line and then down at the bottom on the second from the right column is $137,795,000. And you'll see in the very middle that the coupon interest rates associated with all those maturities are either 4% or 5%. And so that's the basis for, hopefully, a comparison of rates that can be achieved through refinancing. And you'll see on the far right-hand side and up at the top too, that February 15, 23 call date I've mentioned. This first slide is indicative of approximate current market savings at current market interest rates that hopefully could be achieved. Of course, that can't be locked in until we get ratings in place, and the underwriters are ready then to proceed with an offering document having been circulated in this net. But as you'll see, the projected savings in that case, $900,000 or so. Hopefully, that could be even exceeded if conditions are right. And you will see that that totals 17.19 million. Down at the bottom, the key indicator we use, particularly with respect to venture fundings, is that present value percentage. And you can see that, in this case, would be 9.7% of the $137,795 principal that is considered to be refinanced. The next page shows the savings if rates were such that only the minimum savings parameter could be attained. And of course, anything below that, we couldn't proceed with the issue anyway because it would fall below the established minimum parameter if the Board acts on the order this evening. And you can see, in this case, the annual savings would be around $770,000 or so per year, totaling $14.6 million. And down at the very bottom in red, that minimum savings parameter of 8.0 or rounded 8% present value. The next page is a sensitivity graph. And you can see how literally sensitive this issue and the savings are. You'll see in red the current market scenario that I went over. And then if you look at that arrow and up at the top, you'll see that interest rates could only increase roughly 15 basis points in order to stay at and maintain the minimum savings. So that is why flexibility and, like Cindy said, time, to some extents of the essence, in order to hopefully capture the rates that the market are showing now and be able to do it to the left of that arrow and do it at the 8% minimum present value savings or greater. And that really summarizes the refunding opportunity, what we're at now. Do you want me to go ahead and cover this graph, Cindy?
Yes, please.
This is really the result of a combination of, and we do, and we have a very busy and kind of intense model. You've seen kind of portions of that when we did the first issue from the voted authorization and so on. But where we're planning, along with Cindy, Darlene, Tony, the staged issuance of the remaining voted authorization, the remaining $655 million nearly. And in this case, the question was, first, could what's viewed as excess INS fund balance or surplus fund balance be used? And if so, how? In order to basically reduce what the required INS tax rate would be going forward. And so what you'll see in red is how we've modeled application of what was determined to be $20 million that would be available as true excess and surplus. So we actually have application of that occurring from 2021 through 2028. And you'll see, whereas the INS tax rate for this current year is $0.3287, by using the $20 million over that time period, it essentially would, on a level basis, reduce the required tax rate by a little over to about $0.216. Then up at the top, you'll see in the gold, if we can do the refunding and save, and this was based on the roughly $900,000 a year annual savings, that would, at current values or ongoing projected values, reduce the required rate another .3 cent so that the overall reduction would be, in this case, projected at $0.246 from $0.3287 down to $0.30.41 cents for the INS rate going forward to 2028. And then after the final issuance is done and, you know, existing debt service actually drops significantly at that point in time, and you can see 29 and 30, what the projected INS rate would be after full issuance of the bond program and so on. And you'll see down at the bottom in the footnotes, we've actually projected that values for 2021, the upcoming year, would show zero growth and then only 2% the following year. And then we didn't go back, and it's still conservative, to a modeled growth that's 3%, 2%, and so on, on a roll forward basis. But with that, I would be glad to answer any questions. We've included some information at the back about the interest rate markets, both the tax, the municipal market and the treasury market. And what it shows is, as Cindy indicated, that when COVID hit, the market seized up, literally quit functioning, and then rates went up dramatically. And it's been a very slow process. That's what you can see in this spike type on the far right-hand side. It's been a very kind of slow process for the municipal market to come back and issues to be able to be sold and realistic rates to be projected and so on. But it's back, it's functional, and well-rated credits like Arlington ISD, particularly with the permanent school fund guarantee, are having very good reception. But as I said, I'd be glad to answer any questions with regard to the refunding, the tax rate projections, or just market conditions as you desire.
Thank you, Mr. Wilford. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Do any trustees have any questions? And/or comments? Oh, yes, Mr. Will Banks?
I have a question about, if you go to slide nine, just to make sure I heard you correctly on this. So there does appear to be a very narrow window for us to pull this off. This is the one where you had the saving sensitivity.
Yes, sir.
Slide. So only 15 basis points is that window we have to work in? And so that's, so if you expand on how that's putting pressure on us to, because we just have a narrow window to go out, if there's any changes in interest rates? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I failed to mention, when we were talking about the parameters, the designated or the allowable time, once the Board acts, and in this case, you'd have actually a full year that you'd be delegating the pricing authority to Dr. Cavassos and Ms. Powell, our successor. And so we could have, like I said, brought this to the Board sooner, but we knew conditions just flat out were not favorable. They've, rates have come down. And so now it's in a position where we see that, yes, we can be well in excess and more or less what we were projecting back in February, March, as far as savings levels. But part of it ties to materiality. When we were visiting with Ms. Powell, a lot of times, underwriters will say, well, if you can save, in some cases, 3.5% present value, some 5%, you should jump at it. And so it was the decision made that 3/4 of a million, which pretty much tied to that 8% present value, if the district couldn't save at least that, then it wasn't really recommendable to do the refunding. So that's where that minimum came about. And yes, it is a pretty narrow range. So, but it's also a very high mark as far as the minimum savings that have to be met.
But, not that I'm going to hold you to this, but if you were a betting man, given the current market conditions, that the rate should continue to improve in our favor?
Yeah, well, we hope they'll stay in your favor and maybe even drop a little. I've talked twice the last two days with clients and groups with respect to that. And there's really nothing, given kind of the stance of the Federal Reserve and so on, that near-term would exert, we don't think, pressure on rates to move up. The problem and kind of the big unknown is election. And so if there's, say, Democratic administration in this and that, then the markets could see that there could be a lot of budgetary and fiscal pressure that could then result in rates moving up. But through the summer, we're hoping we're in a favorable environment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Anyone else with questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Ms. Mays, I'd like to make a motion. I move to adopt an order authorizing the issuance of the district's unlimited tax refunding bonds, taxable Series 2020, appointing the superintendent of the district and delegating to the superintendent certain matters with respect to the sale of the bonds and enacting other provisions relating to the issuance and sale of the bonds.
I have a motion by Mr. Will Banks. Did I hear a second? Or were you muted? Did someone second?
I'll second, Ms. Mays.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion by Mr. Will Banks, a second by Mr. Hogg. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Walton?
Yes, ma'am.
I vote yes. Okay.
Polly Walton, voting yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Mr. Hogg, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Chappa?
Justin Chappa, I vote yes.
Dr. Raich?
Erin Raich, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Thank you. Now our next action item, Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this is continuation related to appointing consultants, so Ms. Powell.
So thank you, President Mays, Board members, Dr. Cavassos. This item is related to the This item is related to the bond refunding, the delegation that you all just approved. So this evening, we're presenting for consideration a resolution related to that potential refunding. And it 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 seeks to appoint the financial advisors, the bond attorneys, and the underwriting syndicate for that proposed refunding. And we recommend, administration recommends, that Hilltop Securities be named as the financial advisor for the issue. And then the attorneys, McCall, Parker, and Horton, be appointed as bond counsel. And we also recommend that the board approve an underwriting syndicate of five underwriting firms, including RBC Capital Markets, Raymond James, Piper Jaffray, JP Morgan, and Stevens, Inc., to support and execute the sale.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Powell. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to move to approve the resolution as presented, appointing a financial advisor, a bond counsel, and underwriters, and direct staff, and the appointed consultants to prepare for the proposed issuance of the district's unlimited tax refund bonds, taxable series 2020.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Ms. Walton, a second by Mr. Will Banks. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's vote. Ms. Walton?
Polly Walton, I vote yes.
Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
I believe she's gonna vote yes.
Background noise. Mr. Will Banks?
David Wilbanks, I vote yes.
Mr. Chappa?
Justin Chappa, I vote yes.
Dr. Rice?
Erin Rice, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes in the affirmative. Thank you once again, Ms. Powell. Thank you, Mr. Wilford and Hilltop Securities. And I know if no, if no one else understood or followed with anything you said, Mr. Wilford, we got you at savings and 14 million. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is our discussion action item. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Mays, and this is a continuation of our discussion for our preliminary budget, 2020-2021 budget. We presented over the last several weeks and met with the finance committee. So the work continues. And so as we get more information and certainly a summary, we'll provide that. So at this time, Ms. Powell?
Thank you, President Mays, board members, Dr. Kavasos. I'm going to share my screen, put this in presentation mode. So as Dr. Kavasos mentioned, this is now actually our third discussion on the preliminary budget. You can see here the the light gray entries on this chart to show the previous dates and the discussions we've had. So we, on June 4th and June 11th, we also discussed the preliminary budget. Tonight, we're going to continue that discussion. We've scheduled the public hearing for the proposed budget and tax rate for June 23rd. At that meeting, we can finalize any amendments, or not amendments, but adjustments to the budget, including potential adjustments for compensation. By law, the budget has to be adopted by June 30th because our fiscal year begins July 1. As we've discussed numerous times, our budget is adopted in June. We do not adopt the tax rate until August, after we receive certified property values. Those values typically come to us on July 25th. That is a Saturday this year, so we expect to get our certified values on the 24th. And then we will receive notice from TEA several days later as to what our maximum compressed tax rate is for the upcoming year. And then we will proceed with adopting a tax rate. For the general fund, as we have presented previously, the preliminary budget for the 2021 fiscal year has a $16.2 million deficit at the moment, and that is before any consideration for a compensation increase. Also point out that we are projecting that we will end the current year with an $11.4 million surplus that will close to fund balance, bringing our total fund balance to $209 million, which is very healthy, a four-and-a-half months' worth of operating expense. Highlight slide here for the general fund. On the revenue side, we are not expecting any growth in property values, and that is based on information we've already received from the Tarrant Appraisal District. We have, we know that our MNO tax rate, or maintenance and operations tax rate, will automatically be reduced by the state under provisions of House Bill 3. Today, that rate is 97 cents. We expect that our our maximum compressed rate will be reduced to 95.64 cents. That's a reduction of 1.3 cents from last year. We do have the option to raise that rate by one penny with board action. Anything beyond that would require voter approval through a tax ratification election. The state aid that's built into the budget is based on the provisions of House Bill 3. And our enrollment, that is one of the key pieces in projecting our revenue, is at 59,117 students, our projection for next year. That's a decrease of 416 students from the current year. On the expenditure side, we are implementing full-day pre-K in this upcoming year. So that requires us to add 55 classrooms. That means 55 teachers and 55 teaching assistants will be added to the budget or already built into the budget. The full-day pre-K programming is one of the mandates from House Bill 3 and something we were very pleased to see, and we've been looking forward to implementing. Beyond that, there is then a net reduction of 1.5 staff member FTEs. That's due to a combination of changes from projected lower enrollments and some additions for special education classrooms in several different schools, and also for adding teachers for new cohort at the Arlington College and Career High School this year. And in a couple of other minor additions for program changes at One Bush World Language Academy, for example. The budget does line up with the strategies in our strategic plan for this upcoming year. And it includes costs for opening the new fine arts center and athletics center. As I mentioned a minute ago, the preliminary budget does not yet include anything for a salary increase. And we talked about this a little bit in our last meeting, last couple of meetings. The budget that is presented is based on assumptions of mostly normal operations. And everyone fully recognizes that COVID-19 is going to create some some differences in the way we operate. We don't yet know what those will be or where the impacts will be felt. So we determined that that the most logical course of action was to plan for a normal operation this year. And then, as we move through the year, we can amend the budget and move dollars within the budget to address particular needs. This chart shows the breakdown of our expenditure budget. The box on the left is last year's expenditure budget by object category. The box on the right is the preliminary budget for the upcoming year. You can see by looking at the percentages that virtually identical in terms of the breakdown of our budget. Since we are a service organization, the vast majority of our costs lie with payroll in in the way that we deliver instruction to students and operate the district. The two remaining big things for us to make decisions about for this upcoming budget include compensation, changes, and tax rate consideration. We are working with TASB right now on some different models for compensation increases, and we are working with the Board Finance Committee on that. We're continuing that work right now. Showed this slide before. There's a lot of stuff on here, but I'll point out that each column across the page represents a five-year increment for teacher experience. So it begins with year zero, teachers with year zero, beginning teachers, and then teachers with five years' experience, 10 years' experience, et cetera. These are 42 districts, including us, and the western part of the metroplex that we compete with for hiring, recruiting, and retaining staff. We've drawn a line across here at the the median. So this is considered market median for us. It's kind of hard to see with the small print, but the yellow highlighted boxes, this is where we fall when you rank districts from highest to lowest within each experience band. The number at the end, in parentheses, after the word Arlington, that is our rank from last year. In every case, across these five-year increments, we've lost ground this year in terms of how we compare to our our neighboring districts. That is due to, largely to the House Bill 3. When House Bill 3 was implemented this past year, there were some mandates in there on how raises were to be applied. The revenue that was generated for districts also had a had a much, had a different effect, different district to district. And so the combination of the different revenue and the provisions of the raise requirements really disrupted, if you will, or created more variances among the raises given by district last year than we typically see. Usually, districts all give raises within a a pretty narrow band. Last year, there were quite a few different raises approved by different districts. And so I think what you see here, and what happened with us, was reflective of those differences. The districts that are highlighted in green, 64% of all the districts on the page have already had those tax ratification elections to raise their MNO tax rate beyond the 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 maximum threshold. And they accordingly have access to more resources, which helps them offer more competitive salaries. So when we talked even a year, year and a half ago, you'll recall that we were planning for a tax ratification last November. We recognized that we had gone as far as we could go with our tax rate in terms of managing, in maintaining a competitive position with other districts and maintaining competitive and specialized programs that parents and and students were asking for. And we began to discuss, as long as a year and a half or more ago, the need to have a TRE. The original plan was to have both a TRE and a bond election last November as House Bill 3 got to its conclusion and was finally passed. One of the provisions in there actually eliminated the option for most TREs. There was a very, very small window in which you could have had a TRE, and that was if you had already set forth a strategic plan that very specifically called for a TRE in November of 19. And only a tiny handful of districts met that criteria. So the option of a TRE was was not even available to us last fall. We did go forward with the bond proposition in November, $966 million. It passed. We explained to the voters that 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 bond proposition would not increase the debt service tax rate, and it has not. And in fact, you'll see again in just a minute that we are able to lower the debt service tax rate this upcoming year and in future years. House Bill 3 did help. It provided some additional funding. It also provided mandates for additional programming, such as the the full-day pre-K that we've talked about and that we're providing for here. But it, while it helped, it did not eliminate the need for a TRE in the near future. So we've used the term several times, and I heard Dr. Kavasos use the term that House Bill 3 helped us reset the clock. It did not eliminate the need for access to additional resources. So property values and tax rate. We've seen this slide several times in the last few weeks. We are, again, not expecting any increase in property values this upcoming year. We're basing that on data we've already received in May from Tarrant Appraisal District. We will continue to watch that, and we will get our certified values July 24th. But at the moment, we are not expecting any increases in our values. This slide shows the history of our tax rates. You can see in the bar, far right, this is our 2019-2020 tax rate. The blue bar is the, in the no tax rate. You can see it's seven cents less than the year prior. The debt service rate is equal to the two prior years. So this is where you see the effect of our House Bill 3 on our tax rate this current year. So again, some information on tax rate. School districts all levy to taxes. There's an MNO portion or maintenance and operations that pays for the day-to-day cost of operating the school district. The other side of the tax rate is the interest and sinking rate for INS. We, a lot of times, refer to it as toll, as our debt rate. That pays for the principal and interest that's due on bonds. Yeah, the two together gives us our total tax rate. House Bill 3, again, automatically compressed our tax rate in the 2019-2020 year. That compression will continue on in future years. And so by statute, there will be a compression of a prescribed amount to our MNO tax rate in this upcoming year. And again, districts have the opportunity to raise that rate by by one penny with unanimous board approval. The box at the bottom of the screen here has our tax rates on it. So you can see the column that I'm pointing to that is the MNO tax rate. Currently, our MNO tax rate is 97 cents. We expect, based on no growth in our property values, that the state will lower our MNO rate by another 1.3 cents this upcoming year. And then our state aid will increase dollar for dollar to replace the dollars that are are lost by lowering the tax rate. That provides tax relief for our property owners. The other thing, I guess I will point out on the MNO rate is that any additional pennies beyond this 95.6 cents plus the one penny that we're entitled to levy with board approval, anything beyond that will require voter authorization through a tax ratification election. And any pennies beyond this point allow us to leverage additional state funding that we would not have access to without taxing those pennies. On the INS side, again, this is the the rate that we levy to pay principal and interest on our bonds. With the work that we're doing with Hilltop Securities and George Williford, we are able to lower the INS rate even more than we originally anticipated. The rate you see here, this 30.71 cents, is a tick less than it was last week. It was, it's a full penny less than what we showed you last week. So we are projecting right now that our INS rate will drop a full 2 point, almost 2.2 cents next year. If we execute the refunding that we discussed, we anticipate that this rate would go down even more the following year, perhaps would be 30.4 cents instead of 30.7 cents next year. We have not shown that yet here because we have not yet executed that that refunding. So when you add the reductions for the MNO rate and the INS rate together, they result in a decrease of over 3.5 cents to the tax rate next year before we make any other decisions about our budget. And again, we'll set the tax rates in August after getting our certified values from Tarrant Appraisal District. We've seen this chart before. It shows the breakdown of the tax rate. And this is published by TEA. This 91.64 cents is reflective of the decreases that that the state will make this upcoming year. Districts will then add to this any golden pin. Districts will then add to this any golden pennies and any copper pennies that they already have approval for. We have four golden pennies already. So when you add our four pennies to that, you get that ninety-five-point-six cents that we've been talking about is what we think our maximum compressed rate will be this upcoming year. We do have the option of levying one additional penny. That would be one of these golden pennies that actually accesses some significant additional state aid. We can do that with voter approval. Then anything beyond that point, anything beyond this green bar right here, would require voter approval to access. And you also see up here that the maximum rate that any district can levy in this upcoming year is a dollar eight-point-six-four cents. So this chart shows how much additional state aid would be generated by additional pennies of tax effort. Those golden pennies that we talked about, there are four more of those that exist that Arlington ISD could access. And for each one of those pennies, they generate two-point-nine million dollars roughly of maintenance and operations tax, property taxes. And then they would generate another four million dollars approximately of state funding. For those copper pennies, then, they would generate, each one of those would generate two-point-nine million dollars in property taxes and four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in additional state aid. So those are not weighted as heavily as the golden pennies, but certainly there's opportunity to leverage some additional state aid that we don't have access to today. So all those districts that we've talked about that have already passed TREs are leveraging some significant additional state aid that our district has not been leveraging. So this chart we talked about last week, and it has an awful lot of numbers on it, and I'm going to talk through this one more time. I will point out that I did change the numbers in this INS column to reflect the work again that we've been doing already with Hilltop Securities. This reflects a decision that we've made to use surplus debt service fund balance to help buy down the amount of taxes that we need to levy to pay principal and interest that are due in this upcoming year. So to help us get our bearings again, nineteen-twenty, this is where we are right now. We have a total tax rate of a dollar twenty-nine-point-eight-six-seven cents. That's actually seven cents lower than the prior year. What we're looking at and what we're working on right now is next year's budget, so the 2021 year. Based on where we think, what we think TEA will do in reducing our MNO rate, that rate should come down to ninety-five-point-six cents. Again, based on the work that we've done to date with Mr. Williford and then also the principal and interest payments that are due this year, we believe that our rate will come down to thirty-point-seven cents and maybe lower than that if we're able to execute refunding as we've planned and as we hope. So those reductions combined net a reduction of three-and-a-half cents on the total tax rate. And so then moving forward, I mentioned that the highest rate that a district can tax in the upcoming year on the MNO portion of their tax rate is this dollar eight. So there are thirteen pennies between the rate that we're looking at right now and that maximum rate. And so what this chart shows is for each of those pennies, the additional revenue that each penny itself generates in state funding formulas. And then finally, on the far right-hand side, the cumulative revenue that would be generated by taxing at these different levels. We also show in here, in two columns, the impact to the owner of an average-value home. So for example, if we were to look at raising that MNO tax rate ten cents, because of the reductions that we've already talked about, that would actually be a net increase of six, about six-and-a-half cents to our taxpayers or on our total tax rate. That would cost the owner of an average-value home a hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-nine cents for the year. And then that would generate another forty-six million dollars in revenue for the district. So you can just follow this down, and you can see what additional pennies of tax mean in terms of a change in the total tax rate, and then what additional revenue that generates for the district, and then the impact to someone who owns an average-value home. So again, we expect to get our certified values July twenty-fourth. We expect that TEA will announce, and they've committed to informing districts what their maximum compressed rate is by August the fifth. And then we would, if we want to consider levying a tax that is more than a penny above where we are right now, that would necessitate us calling a tax ratification election, and we would have to do that by August seventeen. That's the timeline for considering our tax rate in August. The other thing that we talked about at our last meeting were the budgets for the other funds. There are four other funds that we adopt an annual budget for: food service, natural gas, debt service, and construction. The highlights here on each one, the food service program is funded primarily by the federal child lunch and breakfast programs, commodities programs, and paid meal prices. We don't put or allocate any funds from the general fund to the food service fund. It makes its own way. And we anticipate, we do need to increase the lunch price for paid-status meals at high school and junior high by ten cents this upcoming year using the equity calculator from the federal government. And then the expenditures in the budget are based on our projections of student participation in our meal programs and what we think the reimbursement rates will be and what we think food costs will be. Raises for food service employees are always considered along with raises for the other employees in the district. So those yet are not factored into this preliminary budget. The natural gas fund is where we account for the royalties on natural gas leases and interest earnings on the fund. The debt service fund, we talked about that quite a bit this evening. This is where we accumulate tax dollars to pay principal and interest on our bonded debt for the upcoming year. Again, not expecting any increase in property values. We expect that the tax rate will go down at least two cents next year and possibly more than that if we are able to execute that refunding in the next month or so. And we will adopt this rate in August along with the MNO rate. The construction fund is where we account for the dollars from bond sales. We have sold all the bonds from the 2014 bond election. We've also sold the first series of bonds from our 2019 bond election. We are completing work on the Fine Arts Center and the Athletics Complex that were part of the 2014 bond program. So there are expenditures that you'll see in this budget for those two projects along with all the projects that were scheduled for Phase One of the 2019 bond program, including work to add on and renovate Gunn Junior High for our new Fine Arts Dual Language Academies, three elementary school replacements, new athletics field improvements for several different schools, condition improvements, elementary playgrounds, Phase One of that, and we'll be bringing the design on that to you very shortly. New furnishings for pre-kindergarten, acquiring land, and then also technology, fine arts instruments, and new buses and service vehicles for the district. You have a packet that you received at the last board meeting that had the detail of all of these funds in it. So this is just the summary, trying to consolidate this into a concise presentation. You can see that we expect to have a surplus in the food service fund. Again, a raise would, has not yet been factored in here and would lessen that. Natural gas fund, oil and gas prices have dropped. Production, natural gas has dropped. But we do expect still to generate royalties and then interest on the proceeds in this fund. So we do expect to have an eight-hundred-and-seven-thousand-dollar surplus in that fund. The debt service fund, when we bring this back to you next week and as a proposed budget, we will actually lower this revenue number for the dollars that we will be taking out of the surplus fund balance that we've discussed several times already this evening. So it will appear to have a larger deficit, but that is a planned use of surplus fund balance to reduce the need to, or be able to, lower our tax rate further. And then finally, on the construction fund, we've already sold the first tranche of bonds for the 2019 bond program. So those funds will be sitting in fund balance when we start up the new year. And that's why it looks like we have a deficit here. We'll be drawing those funds out to spend them. But those dollars are, we already have those dollars in hand. So that kind of brings us back to our timeline. And again, we'll continue our discussion next week. We'll continue working with the Board Finance Committee and with TASPI for the remainder of this week, and come back next week and have our hearing, our public hearing on the budget, and then discuss further compensation and then determining any final adjustments to the budget, and then ultimately asking the board to adopt a budget before June thirtieth. And then we will await our certified property values and then adopt the tax rate in August. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Powell. Do I have any trustees with questions and or comments? Okay, I see no hands. Ms. Powell, thank you very much for your thorough explanation of our budget, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And Mr. Drolinger, it's nice to see you this evening.
Thank you. Nice to see you all as well.
Okay, next on our agenda are items to be withdrawn. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Okay. No items to be withdrawn. Ms. Powell.
President Mays, we have for your consideration this evening, I think there is one item from Dr. Wertz on use of the instructional materials allotment for advanced placement instructional materials. There are no bids on the agenda this evening, and there are no donations reported this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. So do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move to approve consent.
Okay, Mr. Chapa, motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Fowler, second. So I have a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Mrs. Fowler. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, about yes.
Mr. Hogg.
Uwe Hogg, about yes.
Mr. Will Banks. Can you please unmute and say it again?
This is David Will Banks. I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Holly Walton, I vote yes.
Dr. Reich.
Erin Reich, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes, and consent agenda passes. Thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is discussion item, pandemic emergency action plans. Dr. Kavasas.
Thank you, President Mays, and this item is a routine item that we put on every agenda, it seems, since we closed. And at this time, there are no real updates. This was also in preparation for if TEA released any new guidelines. They have not. It's predicted to be released this week or next. So there aren't any new updates unless the board has some questions. We'd be happy to answer.
Hey, Keisha, Ms. Mays, I've got a question.
Yes, Mr. Hogg.
And Dr. Kavasas, I don't need an answer now, but I do think when we get closer to August, and I know we have these plans, I just think we have to, I would make the recommendation and the ask of when we do go back in the fall with whichever way and all our contingency plans that we have built out, pending TEA's release on Thursday of what happens in our review, I do think we have to be prepared for and let all of our parents and families know that when they come back, in whatever way we're doing it, if they are back in the classroom and there's a case to test positive, here's our action points of what we're planning to do. And where, you know, recently, we go through, work with Tarrant County Health and work through the professionals that guide us through that. It's not really a question, I just want to make that recommendation and ask to make sure we have those written out and parents are fully understanding about how we will respond and react to this.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Hogg.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Do we have any other trustees with any comments, questions, concerns? Okay, I see no hands. Everybody's still muted. Well, Dr. Kavasas, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll continue on our agenda. Next is our open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have Ms. Alexis Meyer registered to address the board on a non-agenda item.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Alexis Meyer.
Hello, how are you today?
Good, thank you. So the second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have five minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up so you can end your presentation. Ms. Myers, please.
Right, great. Well, thank you, President Mays and Dr. Kavasas and the rest of the school board for having me today. My name is Alexis Meyer. I'm a representative from the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Our mission at LOS is to cure blood cancers and to improve the quality of life of patients and their families. I'm here today just to thank you for your district's support year after year. Over the years, LOS has been able to partner with various Arlington ISD schools and a service project called Pennies for Patients. I've had the pleasure partnering with schools such as Arlington High School, Berry Elementary, Jones Academy, Webb and Spirit, sweet little leukemia survivor. Her name is Lillian. She attends Duff Elementary. The Leukemia and Lymphoma Society's mission hits close to home to many families in the community, and it's truly been a pleasure partnering with such passionate and caring staff and students. So our service project, Pennies for Patients, emphasizes important SEL skills such as kindness, compassion, and teamwork, and all in the name of fighting cancer. Students are also able to access our supplemental and free K-through-eight STEM activities. And actually, this summer, I'll continue to post STEM success for patients.org. But most of all, I really want the school board to know that the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society is a free resource in the community. We even have a COVID-19 financial aid program for patients affected by virus. But again, your students, your teachers, counselors, and administration have been so, so, so supportive over the years. I truly have met so many kind hearts in your district, and I want you to know how thankful the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society is to have these relationships with Arlington. So thank you so much for letting me come say hello this evening, and I wish you a wonderful rest of the week.
Alexis Meyer, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next to our agenda are our superintendent's report. Dr. Cabas, do you have a report this evening?
No report this evening.
No report. Okay, next on our agenda is school board members' reports. Any school board trustees have a report? Okay, I see no lights on. Okay, next on our agenda, Mr. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Yes, Madam President, I believe we have one from Mr. Hogg that we have a district response protocol to positive COVID nineteen ready to give to parents. I assume he's wanting us to maybe look at that at some point.
Okay, is that accurate, Mr. Hogg? Perfect. We got a thumbs up, Ms. Walton, Ms. Secretary. Thank you very much. Okay, everybody, it is six nineteen PM, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.